Welcome to the August 6, 2024 Eureka City Council meeting. Just so you know, you'll see that we have a limited number of city council members tonight, and I am here as the mayor pro tem, as Mayor Burgel is out of town. So I will do my best to support the process throughout the evening, and we're just really glad you're here. And with that, we will go ahead and have a roll call.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton and Councilmember Bauer absent. Mayor Burgel absent.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and begin with the land acknowledgement and then stand for the pledge. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jarujiji. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And just so folks know, we did not have a closed session item, so there's nothing to report out of closed session. Do I do the change to the agenda now? Or, okay, we'll go ahead and make one change to the agenda. Just due to staffing, we're going to remove the item I two, the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, from this agenda and bring it back to a future agenda. And with that, we'll go ahead and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And that brings us to mayor's announcements. I have nothing. Oh, great. Welcome, everyone. We're just getting started. It's so great to have you here. Oh, my gosh. Oh, fantastic. Sorry. And so let's go ahead and start with presentations. We have Beth Burks here from HCOG, which is Humboldt. Gosh, now I'm Humboldt County Association of Governments. I do know this. And Beth will be presenting some information related to Housing Marketing Survey and Regional Housing Trust Fund.
There's one video. All right. Good? All right, thank you. Yes, I'm Beth Burks. I'm the Executive Director of the Humboldt County Association of Governments. And I'm going to talk tonight a little bit about some of the housing initiatives we've been working on. So first, I just want to acknowledge that, yeah, I am the HCOG lady, and we usually do transportation. So housing is a little bit out of our box, although we are responsible for the regional housing needs allocation methodology. That's the process that we get numbers from the states, and those are the numbers that feed into the housing elements that each of our jurisdictions do. But other than that, we haven't traditionally had any housing responsibilities until 2019, when the state came up with the REAP program, which is the Regional Early Action Planning Program. And we received a REAP grant. This was formula funding that went through all of the COGS, such as HCOG, and we received about $800,000. And that was, it was a 2019 program, kind of came to us in 2020, right as we were in the thick of COVID. So it took us quite a bit of time to, you know, for the state to get us the funds and get going. So we're actually just completing that grant right now. We're in the final days of it. And the thing, the types of things we funded with this program, really, the purpose was to fund planning activities that will accelerate housing production, and it can cast a pretty wide net. The things that we funded regionally with this, with this money was the Regional Climate Action Plan and the vehicle miles traveled analysis that goes with that, with the hope that if that has a qualified environmental document that goes with that plan, that we would be able to rely on the greenhouse gas emission measures in that plan and not have to redo that analysis for every development that came forward. So we have a regional plan going with that. The county is leading that effort. And then we had suballocations to all of our member jurisdictions and some other entities, such as the Housing Authority. And, for example, the city of Eureka received about $15,000 out of these suballocations, and they used that for handouts, informational videos, and other things to advertise and call attention to some of the reduced barriers that have been adopted recently to allow housing to be permitted a little faster. And then we also had requirements in the grant that were mandated to do regional educational campaigns to increase awareness and provide information to the public about housing needs in our region. And so we've done this in a couple ways throughout the grant. Earlier on, we did a full multimedia catalog, so we worked with artists throughout the community, and we have a portrait of place with several portraits depicting different housing challenges. There was a comic book generated. There was several long, long-form videos created related to housing, and those all exist on the HCOG website. And the other thing we've funded with these funds is the exploration of a regional housing trust fund. So I'll really be focusing on these last two items as we move forward. And so, so our most recent effort, so I mentioned, we collaborated with artists early on to do a multimedia catalog to raise awareness about housing. And then, as the grant's coming to a close, you know, we have a little bit of funding left, and we reached out to a local graphic designer, and she was able to put together a campaign for us on really short notice. And a lot of this work and the thought behind it came out of earlier discussions we had. We are an active participant in the CERT group, which is the Community Economic Resilience Consortium, that redeck, redeck, I guess, convenes, and Leslie is a council member. Castellano is, is one of our conveners of that. And so we had these different forums. We were kind of receiving this information. We did roundtable discussions, and we'd invited developers, real estate agents, all kinds of folks that are concerned about housing to come in and kind of talk about, okay, what are the barriers we need to get over? And it was really interesting, you know, we all kind of expected to hear about predevelopment funds and the cost, and certainly we did hear some of that. But again and again, what we were hearing is it was really the barriers were kind of community perception of housing and community acceptance when new housing is proposed, that these are really, you know, true barriers to getting housing through in a timely fashion. So kind of took all the information from those roundtable discussions and the CERT group and formed this Keys campaign. And really, it was designed to be a social media campaign that would educate and engage and really drive support for housing initiatives and housing projects throughout the region. The platforms we use primarily were Facebook, Instagram, and the HCOG website. We did do some prints in the North Coast Journal as well, but primarily social media. And it consisted of graphics, photos, videos, interviews, infographics. We tried to make it kind of fun and, you know, change it up a little bit and keep people's excitement going throughout the month that we had this campaign going. One of the big features of the campaign, kind of the, one of the main statistics we kind of wanted to normalize was that 35% of people in our region are cost burdened. So housing insecurity really affects all of us on some level with that many people struggling. So when you're cost burdened, that means you're paying over 30% of your income towards your housing, and you're probably not going to have enough resources to afford all the other things that you need in life. So we also have an infographic that kind of shows when, depending on the job you have, how cost burdened are you with our food preparation and serving workers, really, you know, spending half their income just about on housing, and similarly, healthcare support workers and retail and sales and related. So really, a lot of, a lot of our workers spending, you know, almost half their income towards housing, which is not a sustainable situation. So then, the other things we wanted to kind of explore in this campaign was not just sort of the impact of being cost burdened and not just think about it in terms of finding housing, finding affordable housing, but how it impacts other industries in our region and other, other essential services that are being provided. So one of the things that comes up a lot that we've been hearing from our healthcare providers is that housing is a barrier to getting workers, they need to keep our healthcare flowing. And so we have a small video here, just one of the many that was on there, but if we could play that, if we just hover over it, I think the YouTube should pop up, yeah.
There's a lot of myths and misunderstanding when it comes to housing. And I think the biggest thing is what affordable means. So I think people are looking back to decades ago when affordable housing was about folks that were truly on the lowest end of the socioeconomic status, oftentimes on public assistance programs, and now probably the worries about folks who are houseless, right? But that's not what we're talking about now. Affordable is the people that work for Open Door, that are the teachers in your schools, that are your policemen, your firemen. The average cost of a house in California is almost half a million dollars. That is not within the reach of the 90% of the people in California.
All right, can we scoot back to the presentation? Thank you. Uh-oh. Oh, he's doing it. So yeah, just a little sample. There's some other videos that are, you can still find them on the HCOG website and kind of go through them. They're, they're all pretty short like that, meant to be kind of digestible. It also came with a toolkit, so we really wanted to promote advocacy, you know, what can everybody do to kind of promote these conversations? So, you know, just follow, share the posts, you know, really start normalizing that discussion of just how many people in our region are cost burdened and, and keep that going. Just, you know, I think a lot of us, you know, certainly know people that are struggling to find housing, friends, relatives, et cetera. And so I think, you know, it's no shock to any of us that housing is a major concern. So I think just keeping those conversations going is helpful. And I just wanted to share some of the results from, you know, the great thing about doing a social media campaign is you get a lot of performance metrics. So we had 150 measured impressions across all platforms. That includes how many people were reached when we did the print ad as well. Interestingly, our top three audiences were in Arcata, Eureka, McKinleville, so you can kind of see the breakdown. And then you can even see the age of who, who was taking it in. So that really younger demographic is really the ones that I think mostly saw the campaign. And then, specific to the social media impressions, we had, there's a little bit difference between impressions and reach. So on social media, 40,000 people saw, saw the, the information, and then close to 30,000 of those interacted with it in some way, meaning they clicked on it. And when, you know, I spoke with our marketing professional about this, you see, that's actually a really high number. And I think it's a good indication that people in our community are really hungry for housing information. This is a great way to share with them what's going on and what we need, you know, what we need to share and get that information out there. For those little videos that have been viewed 7,000 times, at least 27 hours or almost 27 hours of watch time. So just those little snippets have been really popular, and I think good to get information out, again, in a really digestible way from some community leaders that a lot of us are really familiar with. So that's all I really wanted to cover about the campaign. I would just say too, you know, it, it did have to wrap up because the grant wrapped up, but we have all of this templating that the graphic designer prepared for us, and so we can continue the effort. You know, our hope at HCOG is that, you know, even though we don't have dedicated funding to this, and we won't be able to produce any more fancy videos for sure, but we can at least keep sharing information, and as new information comes out, we'll have kind of a method to share that. So we'll keep that up on our end. I would encourage any of our, you know, any of our partners, including the city, if you have information you'd like to share using these platforms, we'd be happy to collaborate on that. And then finally, just a little bit, talk about the Regional Housing Trust Fund. So this is a concept that's been in the works or talked about in our region for nearly 20 years, and it's been considered a tool that could really help us catalyze housing development. There are, there are housing trust funds right now in the county. Even there's local housing trust funds. I think the city here has one, and I think the county also has a housing trust fund. Those are local housing trust funds. What we're visioning here is a regional housing trust fund that could be used throughout the region to take care of some very, you know, regional type housing needs. And so the types of things that can be funded by a local or regional fund would be predevelopment, matching fund requirements, or other crucial funding gaps, potentially even infrastructure needs. So lots of, lots of options, and the great thing about having a local or regional fund is we get that control. So we would know, you know, what's most crucial in our community, which, which parts of this should we include and what's eligible to be funded from a regional fund. It also helps us by having a fund set up, access state funding that's available to match local and regional housing trust fund dollars. So that's really a big benefit. We're kind of leaving money on the table when we don't have these systems in place. And then the funding sources would need to be explored. There's lots of different models of how, how they're funded, you know, through transit occupancy tax, through a tax on recording fees. I mean, all of these different things are possible. We definitely need a lot of effort to go into what works best for our community. One thing that's really on, on our radar is the community benefits contribution, the potential community benefits contribution of the offshore wind industry. And we really feel strongly that having a regional fund set up ahead of that industry arriving gives us a good home, so that if they're making community contributions and, and housing, I believe strongly should be one of them, because it is, is a need that we have, that it would have a place to land and be already set up with, with, you know, community buy-in behind it. So that's just one potential source, and others, more ongoing sources would need to be explored. It's definitely not in conflict with a local housing trust fund to have a regional one as well. You could keep both going, and they could have different purposes and different areas of use, so still a benefit to have both. Where we're at with this right now is with the REAP funds. We use just a little bit of money to hire a consultant to basically come up with a work plan of what it would take to form this. And so the next step will be seeking funding to fund that work plan and really begin that work of working collaboratively with all the jurisdictions and what that would look like, what funding sources would feed it, what, what would be eligible uses for it, where it would be used. So a lot more to come on that, just very much in its infancy. I will say that the HCOG board last year, you know, heard the presentation on the Regional Housing Trust Fund, and they did agree that they could be, you know, considered as a home for it, that it could be run out of HCOG if it does come to fruition. So I think we have, you know, enough local buy-in from decision makers in the HCOG board that we, you know, want to continue this discussion. We want to continue the exploration and see if we can get it off the ground. And like I said, it's been, it's been in the conversation for over, you know, for close to 20 years. So I think definitely nice to see it kind of, you know, taking those next, next steps and getting closer. And that's really it for me. I'm happy to take questions and, yeah, whatever you need.
Do councilmembers have any questions for Director Burks? So anyone? Councilmember Contreras Deloche? Okay.
I'll, I'll just comment saying that I'm grateful for this and I'm looking forward to it. I know that in the, in Mayor Burgel's mental health, health series that it's been touched on with homelessness, that this has been a plan in the making that you've put up on there. It's 20 years plus. So that's something that I've heard as well, and I'm just glad to see this finally moving forward and gaining traction. Thank you.
I have a quick, couple of quick questions. Let's see, when you talked about cost burdened, you know, peoples in the community, was there any information that kind of drilled down into specific jurisdictions or districts in terms of who's more, you know, there are areas where people are more cost burdened than others?
Yeah, I think, you know, generally, it kind of tracks with where housing's more expensive, so kind of those areas we see tend to be higher cost burden. But I think you'll really find a lot of that information in your specific housing elements. Some of that, that will be embedded in those, yeah.
I know, I know, I've seen it for Ward One before, and I was trying to recollect.
Yeah, that may be, yeah, that may be in your housing element.
Thank you. And then this is a question for city staff. Would it be possible to share some of this information on the city of Eureka's website or social media, or have we done that yet?
Yeah, we definitely can. I'll work with Director Burks and get the information, and we can drop a link and not only to our social media, but also to our webpage.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for your report, or your presentation. We, we don't have public comment on presentations, but we're just about to the public comment period.
Great, okay, thank you so much.
And with that, we will move to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. So if some things on the agenda, please hold that comment for the agenda item at hand. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And just so you all know, if you ask questions, we may not be able to answer them within the public comment period, but we'll take note of those questions and make sure that the appropriate staff reach out to you after the meeting. Okay, and with that, whoever is first? Hi, Mr. Graham.
Thank you. Evening, council, mayor, city manager, Pam, all you guys, I don't know your names. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to talk a little bit about what Newsom has done to our state, personally to me. I have a rental. I have a person in there that begged me to rent to them, and so I gave her a chance, and she hasn't paid me rent in five months. She said she's going to use Newsom's laws to go ahead and stay there without paying any rent. So I served her a 30-day, and then I had to go to court to serve her another 30-day, and then she took me to court, and I won. Now tomorrow's my lockout date. I got to wait two more weeks and store her stuff for her till she, she has two weeks to get it, and then I got to figure out how to rebuild all the damage she's done with dog poop and everything all over my floor and all the domestic violence that she did, and then try to rent it out before I lose my house. It's caused me so much stress that I've, I've had heart problems over it. So that leads me to my next thing. I went to my doctor. Well, I had to fill out new forms, and I was looking on my form, and it wants to know my pronouns. I'm like, what the hell's this? Bunch of crap, what it is. So my new, so I said, well, might as well just go with the flow. So my new pronouns are "sir, boss." I expect to be addressed by them, and nothing else. I can't believe that they're, they're pressing this. I know you guys all go along with it, with the he/him and the she/her and all that crap. It's a joke, and what they're doing to children is a joke. A transgender kid? Whoever heard of a transgender kid? That's a bunch of crap. I've had about enough of this Democrat crap in California, and a lot of other people have too. In Arcata, you've got a guy going around with a rainbow flag on, blue, white, and pink, boy, girl, baby, that says "map ally" on it. Anybody that knows what "map" means, that means minor attracted person, walking around the farmer's market openly, supporting pedophiles, just like all the other crap going on here with the drag queen shows for kids of all ages. And it's got to end.
Do I have to press anything? Or, oh, wait. Hello, Madam Chairman, I hope you're doing all right. My name is Ethan Penya, and I'm the Vice President of Eureka FFA. The FFA is a national co-curricular student-led organization that strives to educate students on agriculture and leadership. You're probably aware, but the Humboldt County, or the Humboldt County Fair is right around the corner, starting on August 21st. The fair is an opportunity for many of our members to show the hard work and dedication that we've put into our animals. Personally, I've spent the last three months of my life dedicated to my baby girl Carnitas, which, if the name doesn't give it away, is a pig. Carnitas is a 240-pound Yorkshire cross, which means she looks like a little pink piggy you might see in a cartoon. Also, she likes baths and being pet. I hope you can make it to the fair and meet my pig in person, and I hope that our community feels inspired to do the same. I show her on the 21st of August, and the auction is on the 25th. If you have any questions about me, my pig, or the Humboldt County Fair, please email me at carnitazhcf@gmail.com. Thank you for your time, Madam Chairman.
Come on up.
Hello, my name is Kim Class, and I'm the Director of Sequoia Humane Society, and...
I'm Lila Chambers. I'm a volunteer at the Sequoia.
And I'm Frances Charstrom. I'm a volunteer with the shelter, and this is little Harry Potter. He is a shelter alumni.
So I'm here today to talk about two things briefly. One is the long-term future of Sequoia Humane Society, and the other one is something that's coming up in the short term that's a lot of fun. So we have Greenway Partners that we are working with to redo our shelter. We want a place that the community can come to, that we feel so proud of, and we want a destination, one where schools can come to, one where everybody wants to go to. The short-term fun is that this Saturday, August 10th, we have Wolfstock at Halverson Park from 10:00 to 4:00. It is going to be an incredible day. We have been planning, we said we put in at least 1,000 hours of planning. You know how it is running a nonprofit. We're kind of that net holding things together. We have got live bands, we have contests, dog look-alike contests, best wag, we have a lure course, we have an agility course, musical sit, vendors, lots of vendors coming out, and lots of food and fun, a kid chill zone, a dog chill zone. It is, again, at Halverson Park this Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00, and it is literally the biggest dog party in Humboldt County. So this is an appeal to all the dogs out there. Grab, leash up your human, and come out to Wolfstock 2024, and have a blast. We hope to see you there, and thank you so much for giving us a moment to talk about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love Wolfstock, by, Wolfstock, by the way. It's a great fun event. Good evening, council. Good evening, fellow citizens. I'm here tonight not to bring up the usual topics like the ludicrous crime rates, struggling, closing, dwindling businesses, public blight, and blatant vandalism, the ever-expanding, constantly worsening environmental disaster, homeless encampments, full of open sewage, and countless often unkept needles posed, or your poor, panicked, and pathetic response to the COVID-19 pandemic, or the fact that we have three out of five confessing, proud, active, and self-proclaiming arnechists on this council, whose anti-authoritarian wet dream is to dismantle capitalism and think of riots as seen in Oakland as a good party. Not too long ago, SET3 supported full-blown lockdowns on small businesses, forced vaccines on city employees, and suspended all public meetings for a year and a half afterwards, trying to come up with the most awkward social distancing rules outside of any Mormon summer camp. Sounds pretty authoritarian to me. Even in East Germany, our government didn't mandate crap like that. I'm here to tell you how and why that at times harsh, maybe even hostile-sounding tone with those that oppose your agenda, from drag queen shows, drag queen story hours, to needle giveaways, from Frankenfish farms to bird shopper parks out on the sea, came to pass. It arises from the feeling of addressing a governing body sworn to serve the public to increase their health, wealth, happiness, and quality of life with issues that are important, dear, close to their hearts, a lot on their mind, and those grievances fall not only on deaf ears, no. Those, those that criticize issues, not people, get ridiculed, slandered, attacked by and on local media social sites, at times harassed and threatened by those that not only align themselves with many of you up there's ideas, but that you up there align yourself with. Respect is earned, not given. And if you want, as public servants, our respect, then earn it by putting Eureka first in everything that you do. By any yardstick, any statistic, any measurement, Eureka is not doing better than it was six or eight years, or even four years ago. The amount of money and public and other services that a, that a small group of criminal drug addicts consume, gobble, and tie up is so disproportionate that the homeless crisis, aka the most prevalent side effect of the opioid epidemic, has become a burden on the public coffers for all and a business model for some. I hope the citizens of Eureka will come out to vote and vote the bad actors out and the right folks in. God bless America.
I was actually originally intending to speak about this subject over a month ago, but in the intervening meetings, more entertaining things came up. But I want to talk about the wind turbines, about the fact that even if these turbines were necessary for our survival, which they're not, we really should take a look at who we're dealing with here. When I first heard that RWE was going to be doing the project, I was curious about
When I first heard that RWE was going to be doing the project, I was curious about it, so I went down to a meeting at the marina, and I asked the lady, what's RWE stand for? And she said, oh, it's a long German phrase you probably wouldn't understand. Not a good opening for somebody that you're trying to win over to your side. I went home afterwards and looked it up, and it translates to Rheinwasser elektrik. Hardly a long German phrase I wouldn't understand. So anyways, she opens this conversation by telling me that I'm just a dumbass hillbilly who can't comprehend anything. I went ahead and had an hour-long conversation with her, during which she had her spiel down pretty good, but the upshot of it all was that basically they haven't studied anything, they don't know anything about this ocean out here, they've got 19 of these things around the world in totally different situations than what we have off our coast. When I pointed out that maybe they should have done a little bit of studying before they spent all this money on a preparation, she said that they have very smart people working for them, and we should just trust them. Again, not something that a person would say to somebody they're trying to win over to their side. So I went home, and I did some more research on RWE. RWE is well-known and well-hated in Europe, with good cause. They have a long and sordid history of Nazi collaboration, environmental degradation, and running roughshod over local communities. They are the largest CO2 emitter in Europe, and they're currently suing the Dutch government for over $2 billion for enacting green legislation, which would result in the shutting down of RWE's coal-fired power plants. Unsurprisingly, their number-one business is oil, gas, and coal. Wind is just a side grift for them. It became obvious to me, after the whole thing, that there's only three reasons they're here. We have a low population, which means less resistance, we have a large percentage of people who will sign on to anything with "green" in the name regardless of how green it isn't, and we have the appearance of easily corruptible or gullible politicians. And none of those are good reasons to do what they plan on doing.
Does anyone else in council chambers wish to make public comment? Okay, we'll turn to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom wish to make public comment?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, and with that, we will close the public comment period and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read, there will be no separate discussion of these items. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? No. Okay, would you like to entertain a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Moulton and Councilmember Bauer absent, motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item G, Legislative Action Correspondence. This authorizes the mayor or the city manager to sign correspondence on behalf of the city council to support or oppose any legislation or administrative rules proposed or pending action. Is there anything that anyone needs action on at this meeting? Okay, and we will move on to ordinances and resolutions, and Bill Number 10 through 8-CS, the vacant building ordinance. City Attorney Luna, will you be presenting on this?
Yes, I will be presenting tonight, Mayor Protem Castellano and council members, thank you very much. This item is a long time coming. This vacant building ordinance idea was brought up at a previous strategic vision meeting several years ago, and it has been in the works at the staff level for quite some time, and I am proud to say that it has had extensive review at the staff level from everybody, from the fire chief to the public works director to development services, and also it was recently taken to the Economic Development Commission for review and a really robust conversation that I want to thank them for. It was super helpful to have their eyes on this and their recommendation to make a few minor changes and then forward it on to the council for tonight's discussion and possible introduction. So I am here to answer questions, city manager's here to answer questions, I know that Director Girving's staff will be largely responsible for enforcement of this ordinance if it is passed, and he is also here. So I will pass it back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez or Councilmember Contreras Deluch, do you have any questions? Go for it.
Yeah. Bye to my kids, that whole front row were my children. Bye, children. Okay, that was not my question, I apologize. So, yeah, I guess, so we're going ahead and just, now is the good time for us to discuss the whole of the seven-page document, is that what we're doing now?
Questions, as per usual, and then public comment, and then comment.
Okay, my questions were about vagaries, and whether or not it was an issue that some of these things are sort of maybe not super-specific, like, for example, under the owner responsibilities part, 150.097, and it says, you know, maintenance and appropriate watering and care of landscaping and plant materials. I just am wondering, and I've heard that our code enforcement and everything, you know, really try to work with everyone, so it's not like we have, this is not HOA-type behavior that we're looking at, where we're going to be out measuring people's lawns or anything, but rather just kind of more generally. But I am kind of curious, when something is this not very specific, like maintenance and appropriate watering, or, you know, finishes, and finishes in good condition, we just painted our house four years ago, we already need to go back and touch stuff up, and just kind of the nature of where we live in wood homes, some of these things kind of start to look worn very quickly, and so I guess I was just kind of wondering about some of these things and how that might possibly present or pose a problem without it being specific, but kind of left to sort of maybe discretion of whomever's out there. I'm just wondering, is that going to cause objection issues, and is there going to be formal processes of objection? Yeah, I could keep going, but I think you get the gist of where I'm going with that.
Yeah, I think that the fact that there are areas in the ordinance where discretion is required is not something that we're going to draft our way around. The code enforcement team, we have four members of that team now, I know them all quite well, and, yeah, of course, there's discretionary parts of their job that require them to determine whether or not a single weed in the sidewalk violates the Health and Safety Code, you know? Does it, or may it technically? Sure. Are they going to spend their efforts there? Absolutely not. So as to your second question, there will be processes, there always are, for people who believe that they're being, you know, having enforcement action against them under this particular tool and object to it. There's always going to be a due process opportunity for them to have their concerns heard and, you know, have a hearing on those concerns. That's baked into every law enforcement action that we take.
So do you think then, Attorney Luna, that having more subjective versus objective criterion, that that could potentially open us up to any sort of legal challenges going forward on that?
If you're asking whether or not I think that this particular ordinance is going to be challenged because it is too vague to be enforced, the answer's no. That's not something that I'm worried about, I wouldn't be introducing it if I was. And certainly, if we have those questions, if they do come up, then we can always pivot, but at this time, the way that it's written, I don't have concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. I've gone through it a few times, and I'm hoping you can help me if I'm overlooking it, but how are we defining vacant?
In definitions, .096.
Okay, vacant building, okay. And then from that, do we plan on keeping a registry of vacant buildings, or how do we plan to determine that?
Well, yes, to the extent necessary to enforce this tool that we're introducing to our code enforcement team, it is saying that if somebody has a vacant building and it's going to be vacant for more than the time allowed, the 30 days, then they are encouraged to self-report and come into compliance with this ordinance.
Okay, so then we would be asking for some self-report, or potentially from neighborhood reports if they're deficient on that?
That's right. I mean, code enforcement almost all the time is based on complaints from members of the public. Our code enforcement team isn't, you know, doesn't have the time and isn't generally roving the neighborhoods looking for problems, they're responding to concerns of the community when they go out on calls. So some of this will be based on reporting from the community, and we hope that much of it is based on folks who know and understand the ordinance, understands its necessity, respect its necessity, and come into compliance voluntarily.
Okay, thank you. And going to Councilmember Contreras Delucha's similar concerns, are we going to be defining some objective standards here? Again, don't want to wade into HOA-type situations where it's like, oh, the paint is slightly faded, I'm going to be reporting them, now code enforcement has to come, and how would they objectively determine if someone's in violation? You know, granted, if the grass is four feet tall, perhaps, but if it's over six inches, we're not going to be out there measuring, I assume.
I would never ask my code enforcement officers to do that, and I hope you wouldn't either. So the standards that you're talking about in this beginning section, a lot of those are also detailed in the Health and Safety Code, and those standards are also elsewhere in our own code. So are they, are they objective to the level of measuring grass? No, they're not, and I'm not suggesting that we do that. Are they so subjective that somebody might quibble over whether or not their particular lawn is a mess? I've never had that complaint come to me. I don't know whether or not council members have had that complaint, but it's not one that I'm aware of, and it's not one that I'm concerned about at this time.
So we'll mostly be relying on current health and standard codes, I presume?
Yeah, health and safety codes, and I'm sure, I wish that one of my code enforcement officers were here tonight. I did speak with program manager Morgan earlier, and he's not able to be here, but, you know, they go to trainings of their own to help them understand what kinds of issues, you know, rise to that level. And I think that in our community, we're very aware of what that community standard is, we're aware of it because we live here.
And do we have an estimate of how many properties may be affected at this time? Or can we estimate?
You know, that is a question, thank you for bringing that back to my attention, it was a question raised at Economic Development Commission level, and I believe that there are some estimates, I don't have them in front of me, I don't think they're estimates that we can necessarily rely on for these purposes. What I know is that council has brought this up in the past, communities members have brought this up in the past, I know that community members are very interested and many are excited about the opportunity to have an additional tool to limit the number of buildings that remain vacant indefinitely. And that's really what we're talking about here. I think, not to be too punny, but I don't want to get in the weeds on the health and safety standard issues, because most of the buildings that we're going to be talking about, if they were a health and safety issue, we'd be relying on those codes. We're generally talking about places that may not necessarily look like they're a dilapidated mess, but they've been vacant for a very long time, and we're trying to reach with this ordinance that section of buildings in our community that aren't a health and safety issue necessarily, because, again, we have other codes for that, but are nevertheless vacant and causing problems.
Okay, and then one more. Okay, thank you for that, and then my last question at the moment is regarding the fines, which I understand where we're at with those, because we don't have a lot of funds to work with ourselves to provide more of a carrot in this situation. But could you highlight what that may look like potentially in the future if we were to able, or if we were able to offer incentives rather than penalties?
Yeah, this is something that, again, came up at the Economic Development Commission meeting, and it was a really good conversation, I think. I generally would advise that when you're drafting an ordinance like this, the ordinance is the stick, and if we want to put forward the carrots, as it were, we can do that certainly, but I probably wouldn't use the ordinance as the place for that. If we have funds to help people who need it, we are out there offering those all day, every day. If we've offered or we don't have the funds, then, you know, we're going to need to rely on another tool to ensure that people who are in violation of the rules, you know, are being fined for that violation.
And we do have existing carrots, we've had existing carrots, we have granted, well, hundreds of thousands of dollars for facade improvements, for SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design improvements, to all of our businesses. Another future carrot that will be coming forward is once we get our housing trust fund established, there'll be the ability for property owners, residential as well as commercial, well, excuse me, residential, to have access to funding to make home improvements, not only for the property owners, but as well as tenants as well. Those will not go away, and will be continuing. And during COVID, spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on rent assistance as well.
Yeah, and just to offer one more little piece here, the monitoring part of this ordinance gives the property owner an opportunity, actually requires them to, you know, let the city staff who is enforcing the ordinance know what the circumstances are, and as part of that process, there will be opportunities for the city staff to engage in conversations about what help there might be for folks, so they stay out of the fine zone.
Councilmember Contreras Deluch, and we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, well, first I want to say, I know how much, I can tell how much work went into this, so I just wanted to thank you for that, Attorney Luna, and I had watched the economic development hearing on it too, so that I felt like I would have a good idea coming in. I do appreciate that you made sure and pointed out in here about the potentiality of people having problems with maintaining fire insurance when they're living next door or close in the vicinity of properties like this, because that's already something that everybody is kind of at risk of right now, is having problems with maintaining our home insurance in California, that's already something. So I appreciate that you noted that and put this in here, that that is, that these types of properties are posing a, not just a potential fire hazard for those of us who may live close to one of them, but that it's also that insurance companies are taking note of what is in the vicinity of our homes. And so I appreciate that, and I just kind of wanted to acknowledge that really quick. But there was something in here, let me scroll, and my mind is racing, really quick, City Manager Slattery, can I just ask you a really quick question? You were talking about the, my mind just blanked, but about there being some money for fixing up properties. Would that, are you talking about that, this is applying not to primary residences, right? Would that, are you talking about that, these, this is applying not to primary residences, right? This ordinance is applying to secondary residences. Are you talking about that that would apply to primary or secondary or investments?
The Housing Trust Fund that we've, are starting to establish would apply to both for residences if we.
We approve for that to apply to, to like, say, a rental property?
If, yes, and a tenant could do it as well as, as a part of that. It hasn't been put forward yet. It's not like the SEP TED program or the facade program. But as a part of the grants that will be available through the Housing Trust Fund, will allow for funding for home improvements for residential, whether it's primary or second or.
Yeah, I would definitely, you know, support primary, but secondary, I do not really, well, that's a conversation for another time. I won't, I can see Attorney Luna being like, don't do it. Okay, I won't do it. Yeah, don't talk about it right now. But, and then there was one other thing I wanted to ask. I'm sorry. You know what? Let me, I know, Maria, you had, or Councilmember Fernandez had one, so I will.
Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. Let's see. Notice a vacant building is what I'm looking at in here. And so I'm wondering how, how the chain of notification occurs. Is it by mail? Is it by phone call? Is it because one of our code enforcement officers has stopped by and notified them? How, how do we document that notification?
Always in writing.
Okay, and so it would be by, by mail then?
Absolutely.
And so I, and the reason I ask then is because going back to those, those, those carrots, the facade program, et cetera, as we're notifying someone that their property may be deficient, then could we also provide them the information for that? Not only to cure, but to allow them, or at least educate them on the programs that may be available to assist them?
I think that'll be difficult because some of those will have certain requirements, and we won't know whether or not those individuals are qualified to receive those. So some of those will have to do with income levels and those other things like that. So we'll definitely, as Attorney Luna said, when they're in that process of being monitored, we'll get to know the situation and offer those programs and services that can help, depending on the individual.
Yeah, I think actually that is something that has come up in our discussions. And, and I think it's worth exploring the possibility that as part of that noticing, you know, we make sure that people are aware of opportunities that may be out there for them. But that's something that will be developed at the staff level as staff becomes familiar with this ordinance and how it's being deployed. But I certainly respect the idea, and I think it's a good one to have, you know, as much information out there for people as possible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, so regarding vacant buildings and the definition of a vacant building. So I'm curious about a couple of, you know, variety of different, well, you know. So this is something that impacts my ward particularly, not just the housing, but also downtown. Are these empty buildings? And so, and this has bothered me from the beginning, and I do favor openly whatever approach is going to start improving the situation if possible, without us hopefully being too heavy-handed. But my question about the vacant building thing is. So let's say it's a multi-unit complex from the outside, and it doesn't have exterior. It's not, it doesn't look like an apartment complex. It looks like one of the Victorians in my neighborhood, where there's maybe four or five apartments. So long as one is occupied, that would be considered occupied?
Are you asking if each individual unit is in this definition?
Yes, I'm asking for multi-unit complexes, how that would work.
Yeah, I think units are contemplated in this definition, but that definition can, can change. I'm, I'm curious what your, what your thought is on that. If it's a fourplex and only one of the apartments has ever been rented, does that count? Should that be a priority? And should we make sure that our definition does reflect that? Or is that not really what we're trying to target?
Yeah, I, I know, and I just, I wasn't sure because I was thinking there's just lots of little spaces in here. Like, you know, there's a primary unit and it's occupied, but there's a secondary and tertiary unit, maybe on the back of the property that's in bad disrepair. If there, are they considered separate when they're detached? But so long as they're attached, they're considered together? So I guess that's some of what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I think that we would have to go to other parts of our code to answer that question. It isn't in this definition. I don't think that we're going after a threeplex where two of the three are rented at this, at this stage with this definition. But I, you know, that's a good question, and we can, we can address it further at this meeting or at subsequent meetings, if you'd like to, if you'd like to dig down on that question.
Can I ask a follow-up? Okay, so then with things like commercial structures that are attached and owned by the same owner, and now how does that work?
Yeah, I'm actually wondering if any, if either Director Kenyon or Director Gerving has, has that part of the building code in their head. And if not, I think that's a question that we'll have to answer for you in the future. How, how we treat those buildings is going to come down, not necessarily just to this definition, but how, how do we treat them in other circumstances per the code? And I don't have that part of the code memorized. I apologize.
Are you saying that it is, this is already addressed in other areas of the code?
I'm saying I think it probably is.
Okay.
But I don't have it. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
And just remind councilmembers and the public that this is an introduction. And so some of these clarifications could be made at the following council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Mayor Protem.
I do, I did have a quick question. You've alluded to it. But I'm wondering, you know, I realize that this dovetails rather nicely with code enforcement. Could you talk further about the process that might be followed in terms of, you know, how this will be implemented? And/or could Director Gerving come up and talk about how, how it might be implemented and what it will look like? Either one. Director Gerving?
Thanks for being here.
Sure, thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening. As with any new ordinance that the city enacts, at least from a code enforcement standpoint, there certainly will be a time of adjustment for staff to get up to speed and kind of understand in the, in, you know, in practice, how it's going to be implemented. First, we do have a list of existing vacant buildings that are subject to code enforcement action right now. So it would be looking at those and determining which on those lists would fall into this category and then starting the notification process to those property owners and recording those notices. And then, once we, I think, understand how the mechanics of that process work, then we can look at, as we receive new complaints or observe new vacant properties, whether they would be subject to the same ordinance. And, and, you know, the process may evolve and be fine-tuned, and we'll, we'll learn from it as we go, how to communicate with property owners about various programs they might be eligible for and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the question period and open it up for public comment. Do any members of the public wish to make comment on this item? Hey, Mr. Pesch.
Thank you, Council. Scott Pesch. My business is right next door here, and I'm a commercial real estate broker here in the city of Eureka, Humboldt County. I guess I, the reason for me showing up tonight is I wanted to get a better feel for the ordinance by open discussion. My concern and my client's concern is, because I do represent a lot of clients that have commercial buildings that are vacant and/or for sale. And I guess I want to make sure that this is not a penalty for being vacant. That's, that's my concern from what I can see, and also my client's concerns. It's, what you kind of have here is a vacancy will occur, and then you have this crisscross where the homeless are attracted to it because it is vacant. They're less likely to be bothered at a vacant building. And then their trash is left behind, and vandalism occurs. So you have this crisscross, and so the city might look to the owner, and the owner might look to the city at the root of the problem. The homelessness is some of it, not all of it, and I'm not going to go into that discussion. But I think this ordinance is well-written, up to the point where I get concerned about the fee structure relative that it might be imposed to some of the ownership. Good example is I represented the owner who's out of the area in Sacramento, the old Bank of America building on Fourth and F Street. Beautiful building, tall windows, vacant for a very long time. And we had vandalism where people would come in and they would throw rocks in our big windows. And I simply would not recommend them to be repaired right away because I wanted to get somebody inside the building to get some life there. And there's less likely to be vandalism after I got somebody into the position. But sometimes the economics of the city don't always warrant that you're going to have complete 100% occupancy. You're going to have vacancy out there. So luckily I got somebody in, and we corrected the windows, and the vandalism has stopped. So I think we're all working towards the right thing, but I just want to be careful with some of this language more respectfully is, or just to reiterate, the monitoring fee will be assessed until such time as the building or structure is no longer vacant and will likewise be applicable even when a vacant building plan and timetable are in effect. If you have a timetable that is in effect, then I really don't think, you have a participating owner. They're in with it. They want to make sure they can lease this spot out, so that's in their best interest in order to keep the space looking good. So all I'm saying to council and to the city is keep in mind of what we have here to make sure we can work together on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if folks are planning to make public comment and want to line up on the sides, you're definitely welcome to, not required to.
I'll be more blunt than the previous speaker. The utter hubris of y'all with this ordinance is astounding. As has been pointed out, we already have a nuisance abatement ordinance. We have health and safety codes. There's already a, a number of ways to deal with these properties. And for you to, for you all to want to add another burdensome layer of bureaucracy on private property owners just because you can is galling.
Anyone else in chambers wish to make public comment? Okay, anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to discussion for council. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I appreciate the discussion, and I appreciate all the work put in by staff. Not comfortable with it as written. And I, and I want there to be more tools for code enforcement. I don't like that there, I understand that there are people who are, I, I think it can be really tricky sometimes for people to fill buildings. And so I want to be careful that we aren't inadvertently pulling things in just because people are having trouble filling particularly commercial buildings. That's not really an issue with housing because there is a long list of people looking for housing and having struggles. But with commercial, I think sometimes that is a challenge. That being said, I do not like that our downtown is suffering because, and sometimes people are just using things as write-offs. And they're okay bringing down the, well, I, I said it essentially that it's, it's a write-off, and it's okay that it makes it difficult. It makes it difficult to anybody who's leasing around them. And, and it attracts issues which impact the businesses then that are also there and, and the overall economic health sometimes of an area when that kind of thing is happening. So I want to acknowledge that, but I just, I'm concerned about a number of these things just because I feel like we could inadvertently be causing more hardship, potentially, at least in that area. You know, it's not uncommon for something to stay vacant for a period of time. Not just because the rent may be too high, I'm speaking to commercial properties specifically, although I have seen the rents be outrageous, and sometimes it's, makes sense that they're empty. So, but I, I think sometimes it's also that people are not taking or comfortable taking risks on some of the economic situations as they sit. So I think those are my concerns right now, is just inadvertently kind of sucking other things into this.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I, I, I understand the concerns of my colleague there, literally to the right of me right now. But I, I, I see this as, as an opportunity to at least work with the, work with the property owners once they've been noticed, because we do have built into this building plans and timetable. And I understand with the concern being that if people don't want to rent in that particular location for whatever time, for whatever may be going on in that particular location, there is a plan. There is a, there is the opportunity for them to, to cure this based on the fact that, look, I'm trying. And I think that's what it comes down to, is saying, well, what is the plan? Okay, we see that you're doing that and you're maintaining that. Whereas if someone were to not respond to any of our communique, then, then we would have the, the tools necessary to move forward to either force them to capitulate or otherwise continue to ignore us and again, come at them with penalties of a fiscal nature in this. I would vote to move this forward at this time, understanding that staff is still working on this and that we would have to have another, another meeting to approve it, as it were. And that would give us, or at least allow us more time for more input, not only with our constituents, but for the remaining, what, two other council members that can vote that aren't here. So, sorry.
No, that's okay. Mayor Protem, if I may address an issue that the public commenter Scott Pesch brought up, and I think it goes to Councilmember Contreras Deloche's question as well. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the, the penalties here are for people who don't comply with the rules. And if people want to have vacant buildings, they need to, they will be paying a monitoring fee for those vacant buildings, but not necessarily being assessed penalties. And the fees are not yet set. Those are set by council at a later time in a fee schedule. So if your concern is about penalizing folks for having a vacant building, say a commercial property owner who takes three months to rent versus not, that's not somebody who would be necessarily in a penalty situation. They could still be in compliance with the ordinance. They would, however, be paying a monitoring fee. So I, I just think it's really important to understand the difference between fee and fine in this context. And the, the monitoring fee program, by the way, the city already has one. So that hasn't, it hasn't changed substantially from, from what's in existence now to this. It's gotten a little bit more robust, but there's already a monitoring fee program in place.
Thank you, City Attorney Luna. I, I'll make a few comments because I know Councilmember Contreras Deloche is addressing some technical challenges right now. And maybe first is just a question in terms of process to you, Attorney Luna. And that is, you know, hearing my fellow council members, I see before us tonight, we could make a motion on this item. And then if there is a need for kind of more, you know, maybe massaging, you know, or changes and more substantial than what I make to move it forward, there could also be the, the idea to make a recommendation to take a little bit more time to do those changes and bring it back to council. Is that kind of a potential trajectory, is there?
Yeah, based on the fact that we are at only three council members voting tonight, and, and that one council member, Councilmember Contreras Deloche, has raised some. And, and that one council member, Councilmember Contreras Deloche has raised some important issues. One recommendation might be to move to table it until the next meeting, which will give me an opportunity to address some of those concerns behind the scenes and bring it back for reintroduction at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And that, that could be discussed then too, and it wouldn't be adopted. Even further changes could be made after that before adoption.
That's right.
Thank you. Just hearing that, go ahead and continue through comments, Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Well, that was actually what I was going to ask. That was one of the things I wanted to ask was if it was all right if we moved this, you know, if we, if we could consider as a council, just moving this so that the other members of the council could also have an opportunity to take a look at this.
Tabling it as City Attorney indicated. I, I think we could consider, I would still like to make a couple of comments before, before doing that.
That'd be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you, was there anything else you wanted to bring forward though before I?
No, it's, it's not important.
Okay, great. Let's see, a few things I think that, and I appreciate your grace in considering tabling it and, and just the opportunity for really robust discussion and including our absent council members and mayor. Some of the things that I've been thinking about related to this, I mean, first, you know, as I think the public knows, I have been supporting this because of, you know, the economic and social impact of vacant buildings on the community in terms of flight, in terms of, you know, supporting businesses that are working really hard to maintain their business and do really great things for Old Town and Downtown area who are then also, you know, kind of having to encounter or kind of make up for these empty or vacant businesses, whether they're in Old Town or not. Additionally, in terms of housing, you know, council has, and the city and the community has invested significant time and attention and money into addressing housing. And really the most cost-effective way of addressing housing is to actually get people into houses that are already built and just vacant. So just in terms of efficiency, I do appreciate that this supports that in the community. I, you know, I appreciate that you brought up Councilmember Deloche's kind of units versus buildings discussion. That was really useful, and I could imagine something like, you know, more than 50% type of consideration in terms of, you know, if more than 50% of the units are vacant, then it qualifies according to this, you know, the parameters here. I also think that, you know, in some communities, including our own, you know, I've seen the use of partnering with nonprofits for displays in, in vacant buildings, you know, like I've seen Redwood Coast Jazz Fest or the Kinetic Sculpture Group like put displays into buildings. There was the poetry during the pandemic on, on vacant buildings that really did contribute to that. And so I could see in the first section, or no, sorry, under the, the B, sorry, section B, in terms of no person may allow a building or structure they own or control that is designed unless the following applies, that section, and there's a one and two. I could see some kind of qualification around, you know, like, like a community benefiting display or, you know, or something of that nature. Since we're bringing it back, I don't need to define it too academically right now. You know, if, if that was the interest of other council members. And then I think in terms of the letter you brought up, Councilmember Fernandez, you know, I appreciated that. I could say, I would, I think it might be useful to have the person receiving the letter be invited to reach out to staff for support and, you know, pairing with appropriate programs versus, you know, advertising programs that they may not be qualified for. So I think just making sure that, you know, we, you know, right, our, our desire is not to punish people in the community, but is to support the flourishing of our community through people like living and using buildings well. So, you know, making, I think we can for sure make sure that our communications are also, you know, with that quality. You know, and I, I think, you know, this, I don't think has to be decided within this ordinance, but since it's the matter at hand, you know, that funding that we receive, if there are, you know, I think the fees will most likely really just pay for staff time. But in terms of if fines are eventually allotted, those could also be used to provide programs that could support, you know, things like sprucing up a building or, you know, a thematic display to the season or, you know, any number of, you know, housing, things like that. So, you know, there are some ways that we can really build into this, like a kind of robust approach to supporting, I think, what we all want for the community. And I think this is just one small tool as part of that process. So I think I will look back to Councilmember Contreras Deloche and Fernandez in terms of if you are thinking to table this item or wish to entertain a motion.
Just as a point of order, and I'll look to the city clerk for, for guidance on this as well. I think a, a motion to table is also required. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, if we could have a motion to table to the next meeting.
I can motion to table to the next meeting.
All second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor.
Three yes votes to table, Councilmember Molton, Councilmember Bauer, absent, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And with that, that brings us to reports and action items. Let me just end for item I1, we have the receiver report from the, it's the group review of incident at Cal Poly Humboldt, and that's by the Independent Police Auditor for Community Oversight on Police Practices Board. Abbreviated as OIR, in response to the Cal Poly Humboldt protests.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, council. We were directed to present this to the cop board. We presented this to the cop board at our last meeting on July 23rd, I believe it was. And so we have our independent police auditor, the OIR group up here. We are going to start off with the police chief, Chief Stevens, to present information related to the response. And then we'll follow that up with Principal Theresa Magula and Julie Ruland, who will finish off the presentation. So, welcome, chief.
Chief Stevens, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Potem and council, city staff. I'm going to do a quick presentation on the police response to the Cal Poly protest on April 22nd, 2024. Kind of lay the foundation of the reasons why we responded, our response, things that happened during the response, our follow-up afterwards, and then allow the IPA then to speak about their review of those incidents, videos and the other materials that we were able to provide them. So on April 22nd, 2024, approximately 5:30 PM, EPD received a request from Cal Poly Humboldt for assistance with a group of protesters that had entered and then occupied Siemens Hall on the Cal Poly campus. Once my patrol sergeant made me aware of the request, it came into our dispatch center. I contacted the former chief of Cal Poly and confirmed what he was actually requesting of us in the response. After that conversation, he, while he had advised me, he was requesting personnel to assist with the arrest of approximately 25 persons that had occupied Siemens Hall and were refusing to leave. I authorized the request, and since the request came into our watch change, I had the opportunity with personnel already on scene to send a combination of those that are on duty and those that were coming on duty up to Cal Poly to assist. The initial response authorized was one sergeant and four officers. This allowed us to maintain our staffing responsibilities for the city and police the city. Why do we go? Because it was a request for mutual aid made by a small agency within our county, and I had the resources available to provide the assistance. This is what we do in Humboldt County. We are all small agencies compared to a lot of places. And we always have events sometime, well, sometimes we have events that are well past our capacity to handle. One such example is the Sarah Bareilles concert that we had in Eureka. Not only do we utilize personnel from every agency in Humboldt County, but also adjacent counties to come and assist with that. So mutual aid requests are not uncommon in, in this area. After I sent the sergeant up there, I made a phone call and spoke with him personally while he was on the way up to Cal Poly. I instructed him to provide the assistance requested as long as it was within law and policy. I asked him to watch over our personnel and stay together as a team and phone me immediately if anything had changed and needed any additional assistance. Not exactly sure how long it took, but within that first probably hour, hour and a half, a Code 30 request came out from Cal Poly from the personnel on scene. A Code 30 is a countywide, officers need assistance call that is relayed by radio through communication centers throughout the region for an immediate response by all available resources. Unless otherwise designated, this is a Code 3 license sirens response to the location requested by the agency requesting the assistance. I was notified of this request and sent additional resources while maintaining our ability still to police the city. I responded at this time from my residents to the scene. I also phoned on my way and spoke to the sergeant that was on scene, and I was pretty much just told this is getting bad and we need help. I requested a recall of all our available officers and instructed them on where to respond to and what gear to bring. A request was made for additional gear to be brought to the scene, and on, on-duty personnel was able to accommodate that request and bring it and stage it at Cal Poly for us. I contacted one of my commanders and requested they also respond to Cal Poly. And by the end of the night, once everybody was on scene, we had about 20 personnel from EPD at Cal Poly. Our primary mission, once we got there from the Code 30 request, was to take care of the scene, scene management, officer safety, create clear communications and identify mission objectives that we needed to make a priority at that time. While these tasks were happening, officers worked to stabilize the scene and prepare various contingency plans. At the end of the evening, we realized that we were outnumbered. The mission had become convoluted, and there was no real guidance being given from Cal Poly personnel. And our efforts were mute at that point. So we decided to vacate the area. Cal Poly administration began to try to negotiate with persons, get them out of the hall when that was unsuccessful. And dealing with a large group of onlookers and protesters, we decided to leave. I would say we were outnumbered at least 10 to 1, just with the people on the outside in the quad. So it was not a conducive situation for the safety of the officers that were left on scene. The agency, the agency heads that were on scene worked with the former Cal Poly chief to create an exit strategy and vacate the area, giving up the ground and building to the demonstrators. Again, at this point, there were no clear objectives that could have been safely carried out that evening. And the circumstances we were facing and the number of personnel we had available on scene were not enough to accommodate any mission. A conversation was had with the quote-unquote leader of the demonstration on the outside, the one holding the megaphone. And we were able to negotiate a safe exit for the officers that were on scene. I'm going to show some videos, and the videos are important because they help lay not only the foundation for some of the things that the IPA will review and talk about, but also it gives a good perspective of how, when you only show certain things, the perception of what happened can be skewed just because of what you do know or don't know because based on you're only doing that on what's the videos being played. So our officers and arrest team were assigned to remove the barricades that were inside Siemens Hall, just inside the foyer. The team assembled in front of Siemens Hall about 7:10. At 7:18, they entered Siemens Hall and began to try to disassemble the barricade. At this time, you'll see on the video, the protesters began throwing full cans of food and paint at the officers and deputies that were up front. You'll see them hit the wall and shatter. You'll see them hit the actual individuals, the deputies and officers. And then once we get up front, because we had equipment on scene that would help protect those trying to move the barricades, we had our shields, you'll see them bounce off the shields that were used to protect those that were trying to remove the barricade. Derek, can you start this video? At this point, once we take the front line with the shields, we begin to try to push the crowd back slightly so we can continue to remove those items that were keeping us between, were actually stacked between the officers and the group of protesters. During this, one of our officers gets their legs trapped behind a large desk, something that was on the floor on the protester's side. The push from the protesters back creates circumstance where they get trapped in that location. This is the video from, I think it was Redheaded Black Belt, it says. So this is the public view video that was posted online, shared via social media to show from the protester's side what was going on. And Derek, if you can start that video, please. Derek, you can stop the video there. So what you've seen is the interaction that happened between the protesters and the officers and deputies that were up front. You saw a use of force take place. What you don't see in that video as much is the officer that's trapped behind the thing. So this is the body camera video from the officer directly to the left of the officer that got trapped and was getting assaulted. So not only did the officer's legs get trapped, once they were being pushed over, there was a protester that was actively punching and kicking the legs of the officer while this was all going on. You'll see in the video that, this video, that the tall deputy that was standing there that was getting hit with the water bottle actually has his hand under the officer's vest that's going to the ground and is holding on to her and is using the force that is being used to try to get the crowd back to get her up off that, out from that pin position. And so this is just a different perspective on what you've seen, but this is the piece you can't see necessarily from the public view. So I just wanna state that when the review asked, came from council to have this reviewed and city manager, the IPA reached out to us and we provided hours and hours and hours of video. We were up there for probably the better part of four hours total with twenty officers, everybody with body cameras. All that video was provided to the IPA. All the video evidence that we pulled offline to use as part of the investigation was provided to the IPA as well as the cooperation of Cal Poly Humble provided their quad cameras, any cameras they had on the outside just to give an overview of the entire scene from different perspectives, along with every written report that was done by those that were involved in any use of force at the scene. So all that was packaged up and sent to the IPA for the review of this, as a part of this request. In total, three officers received injuries during this initial altercation that took place at the door. An EPD supervisor was hit by a full can of sardines in the leg. This was the second can he was hit with. Luckily, the first one hit off his Kevlar vest and didn't cause any injuries. These are the injuries to the officer that was pinned down behind the large object and couldn't get up. And then one officer suffered an injury to his arm and to his hand. So what was the next steps for EPD as part of this whole demonstration and ongoing issues at Cal Poly? So after the, we vacated the scene that night, we came back to headquarters. We maintained a task force on scene at headquarters throughout the night because there were arrests that were made and that turned into people protesting outside the Humble County Jail. So we were present to that protest disseminated early in the morning hours. The April thirtieth operation to clear the campus and take back control of the campus, CPD was not involved in. I played a role in just as going to the operations plan and listening to the briefings. Our ask as a part of the mutual aid that night was to keep task force available that could respond anywhere in the county to assist with any protests that would happen or any other issues that would break out because our resources were being drained and pulled in different directions. So we had two task force at our department that night. And we also knew that we were expecting a large number of arrests from this operation. And again, we have the jail in our operational area that we're responsible for and we knew that would result in more protests at the jail. The next thing we had was the commissments for Cal Poly. Given that the campus was closed, they decided to have the commissments off campus. Two of those locations were within the city at the Eureka High School and the Eureka Theater. We didn't play a role in the actual onsite security for this. However, we had complete control of the mission and had two reaction teams at our headquarters. They conducted every patrol checks every thirty minutes of the venues and checked in with those that were there on scene. And we were ready to respond in the event anything happened. Not only did we have the two locations, but at the courthouse, there was a non-ceremony event taking place, memorial, they called it, which probably had a hundred and fifty people show up for, so we had to make sure we didn't commit ourselves, all our resources to one location because we had multiple things going on. All these events were successful and required no additional police response from EPD or any of the react teams. And actually, we got a lot of positive comments from family and those that came into the city just based on the fact they knew what had happened. Their family members got the opportunity to graduate. And the commencement ceremonies were actually more personable this way because they were only thirty to forty-five minutes long and there were smaller crowds of about a hundred and fifty to three hundred people. So in the end of my part of this, I want to thank all the agencies that were on scene that night and responded to assist when the call for additional resources went out, especially the Humble County Sheriff's Department, as their personnel were upfront with EPD officers during the height of the physical conflict and were instrumental in getting our officer unpinned and ensuring the safety of everyone that was on that initial mission. We work hard in Humble County as leaders to ensure positive working relationships amongst our agencies. And when called upon to lend a helping hand when we can. This is what makes working in this community special. People step up, agencies step up. And again, EPD stepped up and rose to the challenge of a professional and balanced demeanor and approach to the situation that we faced. The last thing I want to say is that, you know, I've heard a lot of things following, you know, this incident up there. I will tell you that I take my job very seriously. Every day, I put people's lives in danger. I have about seventy employees right now that any given day, something could happen to them. We make decisions based on the best information we have and we make decisions based on this is what we signed up to do. I can't control the environment of everywhere we go and what we do. What I can do is try to make the best decisions I can to ensure their safety. But they all know the mission that they get involved in when they're a sworn peace officer and especially for EPD. And they're gonna take it missionary and carry it out the best they can. But just understand that I never take this stuff lightly. I've lost sleep since then about this incident, about my people getting hurt. I was up there that night for three hours or so with them afterwards. And was not happy about not being in the initial part, not happy about the way it was handled. And I know there's a lot of stuff that's coming. There's a lot of changes that are coming after this. Unfortunately, that's how things usually happen is we have an incident and we make positive changes to make sure we don't face the same circumstances again. But I take the safety and welfare of my employees, my friends, my people, our people, very seriously. And don't ever put them in a position that haphazardly would cause any additional concern for their safety. So I just wanted to reiterate that. And on that, I'll be happy to answer questions after the IPA's presentation if you have any, but I would like to turn it over to the IPA at this point.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, council members. First, I just want to say thanks to the chief for that excellent presentation, for his willingness to share the videos in the public forum. And also for his cooperation, the cooperation of his leadership team and really getting us everything that we needed to do this review. And not just this review. We've been working as the IPA for two years now and have been very happy with the level of cooperation that we've seen from the chief, always willing to answer our questions, provide us the materials we need. And we have appreciated that support and the work we do. Getting to the introduction late, sorry. My name is Julie Ruland. This is my colleague Teresa Magula. We have worked, as I said, for the last two years as your independent police auditor. We are members of OIR Group, which is a team of oversight professionals. We work with municipalities and counties and police agencies throughout the state and in different parts of the country. And we've been doing that work for a bunch of years. Here in Eureka, we are tasked with reviewing EPD's investigations into complaints made about its officers' conduct. We also conduct periodic audits pursuant to different requests, kind of reviews that have come out of incidents like this one. We regularly report to your cop board and so we're happy to be here tonight. We've been here before to the cop board. We often present on Zoom during their quarterly meetings. But we're happy to be here presenting to council tonight. What else? We also often make recommendations relating to best practices. And like I said, we prepare written reports and then give these verbal reports. City leadership asked us to review this incident from earlier this year at Cal Poly. And we were happy to do it. We felt very comfortable stepping into that role in particular because we have a wealth of very relevant recent experience looking at crowd management issues and law enforcement response to protest activities. During the summer of 2020, you will remember there were widespread protests throughout the country following the murder of George Floyd. And a lot of those went pretty sideways and created a lot of conflict between communities and the law enforcement agencies that responded. We were engaged by a number of different cities to do detailed after-action reports following those protests and the protest responses, including Kalamazoo, Michigan, Iowa City, and here in California, San Jose, Santa Monica, and Santa Rosa. So we kind of step into this particular assignment with that background. But important to note that for this assignment, we were, the scope of this work was only to look at the EPD response. We did not look at the response of any of the other agencies who were involved on that day, some of whom also used force and some of whom were involved in the decision-making that sort of led up to that incident and where it was. In addition to the videos that have been made public and are available on various social media sites, as the chief said, we received hours and hours of video and reviewed all of those. We reviewed written reports. We had conversations with the chief about how things unfolded. And we took all of that into account in preparing the report that you received. It provides a very detailed factual statement about how things went bit by bit. But it all really boils down to our kind of conclusion, which is EPD officers and the sergeant who responded that night stepped into a situation that was different than what they expected based on the request for help that went out and the information that they had received. It was a situation that they realized when they got there that did not have a concrete plan, no clear objective, and really gave little or no chance for what we might consider to be a successful resolution that night. And yet, the officers sergeant who responded did not have the authority to really do anything about that in the moment. And that has to do with the rules and the governing, how agencies respond in these mutual aid situations. And Teresa is gonna talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. But once they began engaging with the protesters, they quickly became overwhelmed, as you saw in that video. And we found that they were put in a spot where the use of force was necessary in order to protect the officer and in order to safely pull back and disengage from that situation. All of those things considered, we found that the EPD response was in alignment with best practices around crowd management and use of force. And our report tackles this subject in four main sections. One looks at the basic principles of crowd management and use of force. Second looks at the command and control issues that were at play that night. And then third, issues around mutual aid. And fourth, and maybe most importantly, and the chief sort of talked about it there at the end, it's moving forward. It's the after-action report, after-action sort of initiatives. And those involve issues of communication and just looking ahead, looking, using the incident to learn lessons and improving future responses. So those are all parts of our report. I'm gonna let Teresa talk for a little bit about the more details on some of those subjects. And then we'll be happy to take whatever questions you have.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Julie. I'm Teresa Magula with OIR Group. I'm really pleased to be with you all tonight and thank you for the opportunity to present. As Julie mentioned, we worked through some key areas that we felt were important to help kind of frame the results of that evening. The first is the fundamentals of crowd management and use of force within crowd management. But crowd management, as we've seen, you know, time and time again, is a very complicated response. We acknowledge both in our report and here before you that crowds are diverse. And so it's hard for both the law enforcement response as well as the crowd that is there that evening to call them one kind of monolithic entity. They're diverse and there are different intentions within those crowds. What I think is important to highlight in this particular incident is that before EPD even arrived to the scene, there had been a decision by university administration to consider the individuals who were inside Siemens Hall to be trespassing and vandalizing. And so the call for service and the mutual aid request was made to help arrest those individuals. That was a decision that was made before EPD was even on the scene and engaged. And so soon after, once EPD arrived and the decision was made to start to execute those arrests, some in the crowd, as you saw in the video, began throwing cans, paint, food and otherwise. And in our review of this, in our review of other crowds, those individuals, whether or not they were representing the entirety of the crowd, were certainly showing their own violent intentions, a potential to incite others to violence that evening that were within that crowd. And so the decision was made, again, outside of EPD's span of control, to consider that an unlawful assembly. And so the entirety of that crowd was then made on, was then put on notice that they were part of this unlawful assembly within Siemens Hall. That decision, again, was made by university administrators, was made by the university police department. And so once EPD arrived to the scene, their purpose was to provide the support to arrest the individuals who were inside, who had already been deemed as a collective and unlawful assembly. Once that decision was made and the individuals were placed on notice that that was the case, the use of force within the crowd management context is governed by an individual agency policy on use of force generally. So since the summer of 2020, there have been some laws changing and limiting or restricting the types of force that can be used on crowds. But certainly what we saw here in this incident were individuals being displaying aggressive or assaultive behavior against the officers who were attempting to enter the hall. And those individuals were met with what we believed to be the appropriate use of force, both to, as Julie mentioned, help to rescue the officer who went down as well as to be able to execute the mission that they thought was the appropriate mission that evening. So again, force in its, wherever the context is, has to be reasonable and it has to be necessary. And in our evaluation of those videos, not only the video that you saw tonight, but we've reviewed the body worn camera of all of the officers who were on that line. We reviewed a lot of video that was taken from inside Siemens Hall. We found that the use of force by the EPD officers was measured, was reasonable and was necessary, and was directed at those individuals who exhibited the behaviors that would warrant that use of force. The second comment and category that we looked at was planning and command. As you've heard mentioned frequently here, there was a lot of concerns leading up to EPD's response that left EPD officers responding to a situation that, as Julie was mentioning, really had very little chance of being successful. And so you might watch that video and ask yourself, why were they in there to begin with? Why were their officers staging at the foyer of that hall? Well, it had to do with, unfortunately, what was deficient in our view, operational planning leading up to those officers actually standing on the line that evening. There was a potential plan that was kind of tentatively discussed when officers arrived on the scene. That plan seemed to kind of shift and morph just from the walk from patrol vehicles to Siemens Hall. We watched all of those kind of plans unfold on body worn camera. There was no clear unified command that evening, so no individual who took over the leadership role of incident commander that evening in the beginning stages. There was really, in our view, no risk assessment. So what were the risks versus the benefits of engaging with this crowd on that particular evening? That in our review- That, in our review of this, did not seem to have occurred. There was really no contingency planning, so we didn't see that there were kind of part A, and if part A doesn't go this way, we'll do, we'll try part B. There was really no flexibility in how officers should or could respond that evening. And we saw there was a real kind of lack of consideration of what we would call operational basics. So you saw in those videos, there was barricades, there was furniture between the protesters inside and the officers outside. That is a physical barrier that's very difficult to break down. It makes it very complicated for officers to go in, clearly. There was a crowd that had developed behind the officers. That's a tactically unsafe situation, right? Now you have pinned officers in between protesters inside and a crowd outside. So these kinds of really basic operations that we felt were not appropriately addressed early on really resulted in kind of this perfect storm that you saw unfold in those videos that Chief Stevens showed. And EPD officers, for better or worse, found themselves responding to that perfect storm that was unfolding that evening. And unfortunately, in the course of that, an officer was pinned, an officer went down, and then the mission was immediately flipped to, we need to get this officer out and get the officer to safety. So that's what you saw unfolding. And you know, as I mentioned, I think it's important to reiterate, we did not, in our review of this, see any kind of immediate threat that would have warranted a law enforcement response to the hall in the way that it occurred. That was, again, outside the span of control of EPD. There was certainly reports of vandalism, perhaps there was concerns about trespassing in the hall, but none of those would really warrant removing individuals from the hall or having that plan in the first place. I keep talking about span of control, and so some of the questions that you might be having might be, well, why didn't the EPD officers or supervisor on the scene do anything about that? Really, this points to some challenges with mutual aid. Mutual aid is a critical factor in law enforcement responses, especially in a community like yours, as Chief Stevens has already mentioned. It is essential that agencies are able to respond to help each other out when that need arises. But that can be really complicated, right? So officers arrived onto the scene, and they did not have the appropriate direction and command. But they were also somewhat limited in their ability to speak up about their concerns with what they saw when they arrived. We mentioned in our report that there was concerns raised by the supervisor in the course of listening to body worn camera footage. And it's difficult to have a supervisor speak those concerns to another agency's chief of police. We think it's, of course, very important because of those kind of command structure challenges and mutual aid challenges, that these agencies have a plan and communication well in advance of these types of incidents occurring. In particular, in this case, we had the influence of university administrators who had a particular goal in mind without perhaps understanding what that would look like being executed in the field. So they said, we want the building cleared, we want you to go in and arrest people. And I don't know that there was the communication and the discussion either at the moment or prior to that of what something like that looks like in real life. It's important, then, that these agencies come together and establish those types of roles and expectations before incidents like this happen. And that really transitions nicely to the ideas that, and recommendations that we have made, that Chief Stevens and EPD have already adopted. So in the interim between us completing the report and meeting with the COT board and now meeting with you, most of these have already been completed. The real important factors are what happens moving for, excuse me, moving forward. Chief Stevens and county partners, including university police department, will come together and have a debrief of this particular incident. It will be an opportunity to sit down to discuss these kinds of roles and expectations for future incidents. Certainly, future incidents will occur. And there is space to start to develop those types of collaborative plans in advance. There is also space for EPD to debrief internally, which has already occurred. Chief Stevens has already debriefed with each of the officers individually and collectively to come up with lessons learned, strategies moving forward. And then a side note is that the chief has also committed to sending, at least, I believe, two personnel to mobile field force training. That's the training to provide officers the appropriate tools to respond to these kinds of crowd management situations. We don't think that there was any deficiencies in their training or in the way that they responded. In fact, they really responded with best practices for crowd management. But it's an evolving field, and there's always something new to learn. So the chief will be sending individuals to a training facility to get kind of the latest and greatest in crowd management and bring that back here to your city and then to your county partners. So we're really pleased, we're really grateful that our recommendations were implemented straight away. As our reviews in other cities showed, some agencies are very interested in hearing the recommendations but not in implementing them. So really, it's a testament to your chief and his commitment to successfully managing these going forward, that he has already implemented all of those. We will absolutely take any questions about this incident or about our work generally. And I know the chief is also able to answer questions, and thank you.
Thank you for the report, and we greatly appreciate it. And thank you, Chief Stevens, also. It's, yeah, we really appreciate your service and responsibility, you know, to the force and to the people you support. So thank you. I just want to check in real quick. I'm OK with not having a break right now, but also if people, you know, have been sitting for two hours, do folks need a short break? You're good? OK, great. Then let's go ahead and move to questions. Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you for putting the report together, as well as the, to the auditors and the slide deck for, from Chief Stevens. Could you, and it's only because technology has failed me, could you please highlight what the recommendations were that you had made to our citizen oversight committee?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. So we made, I believe there were five recommendations. I have them right here.
Oh, thank you.
Let me get that right. Six recommendations. Yeah. Essentially, we wanted, we recommended that EPD work with regional partners. So that would be the different agencies that come together with mutual aid expectations to set up some templates for planning these kinds of incidents in the future. It's part of kind of law enforcement's usual operations to have templates and operations plans. And there are some best practices that suggest that operations plans can be kind of generic, leaving space to sort of fill in the blanks, if you will, for specific operations. And so that was our first recommendation. The second would be to establish some form of a mutual aid agreement with these partners. Those can be relatively simple. They don't need to be enormous manuals of how to respond to every last type of mutual aid request, but certainly we would like to see some kind of establishment of that expectation setting, who would be in charge if you send someone on mutual aid and so forth. We were looking, and this is something that we have recommended to the COT board previously, for EPD to establish a formal system for evaluating their critical incidents. It's something that we're working with the department to help establish, so that after any type of critical incident, there be a formal review process, not necessarily by our team, but certainly internally. We recommended that multi-agency debrief that would be specific to this incident. I believe that's happening in the next week or so. And we recommended that EPD send someone to that mobile field force training, which the chief has already committed to, and that that individual or individuals come back and bring that information to the department. Those were our six recommendations.
Thank you for that. And then earlier in your presentation, you had said that there was a lack of risk assessment just from that situation and that university police had oversight of what was going on in that, during the event. And so what would a risk assessment look like at that point, and how could one be implemented moving forward? Or how could we implement that process moving forward?
Yeah. So essentially, what we're looking for is for law enforcement to have some kind of incident command that is in real time determining the types of risks and benefits of a particular mission. And it really unfolds in real time. So it would be something that would happen, for example, at a mobile command center where you would bring in your key stakeholders and say, OK, what are we looking at? What do we have? What are some risks that might face us? And is that outweighed by the need for public safety engagement and enforcement action at this time? So it's really a real-time type of analysis that occurs. It's not something that, you know, we could be prescriptive about in advance.
Right.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that, like, the importance of communication among all the stakeholders when it comes to that sort of risk assessment, right? And I don't, we don't know, it was not part of our review, what happened at the UPD level, the university administration level. But we would expect, if we just sort of move this event to your city, for example, and you had a group of protesters who occupied a city building or the library, say, and there were council members or your city manager saying, I want those people out, chief, go get those people out of the building. What we would expect to happen is that the chief would say, OK, sir, with respect, this is what that might look like, and these are the risks that we would be taking if we went, tried to go do that. And this is, you know, there might be force used, there might be, and to play out some of those contingencies so that everybody's really operating from the same set of facts when they're making these decisions and not just issuing directives, if that makes sense.
It does. And so thinking of that analogy, though, so at least onsite where we did have at least a sergeant, they did express those concerns, from what I'm hearing?
They were amongst themselves, talking about this sort of uneasiness, like, you know, that. But again, it's this mutual aid response, and you're, when you respond in a mutual aid capacity, you are folded into the command structure of the entity who requested the aid. And so if the university police chief is there, he's in charge. And for a sergeant or an officer to step up and say, you know, I disagree with that, is not something that's really within the culture or practice, and for good reason. I mean, you need to have somebody in charge, and you need to have people following the directions of those people.
And I understand the structure, but I would also say that there's a time to respectfully say, this might not work, or this isn't going to work. Granted, that's not the culture. Maybe we'll get there, but I think that's larger than where we are for this conversation at the moment. And then it goes back to the question of, yes, mutual aid's been called, but we don't have an agreement with UPD, with university police, from what I understand from the report, or what I'm trying to recall anyway. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the mutual aid request is a sort of unwritten understanding amongst agencies. But there are some agencies, areas, that have mutual aid agreements that are actual written documents. At times, it is something as simple as we agree that we are going to aid one another in the times where our capacity is exceeded and we need the assistance of others. And the person, the agency who requests the aid will be the agency in charge of command in that circumstance. So it, there are some that are very detailed and others that are just those kind of single-page understandings. And there are certainly statewide regions, and the state operates under regions of mutual aid expectations under the Office of Emergency Management. And so those are written as well, those are written plans. Humboldt County is part of a region in the state where that is a written understanding that, but that covers all, all kind of public safety, fire department, as well as police departments.
And do we currently have, again, like you had emphasized there, it's more of a general understanding, do we have mutual aid agreements between any of our other?
So we don't, I mean, it's standard practice and first response. All emergency services have mutual aid. While it's not a written agreement, as the chief alluded to, I mean, whether it was 2020 here, when we were dealing with the George Floyd processes that was going on, and I think we worked with the county and responded to that. As the chief described, even for an event that's bigger than what we can handle, like the Sarabarellis event, we brought in mutual aid from people all over. Obviously, the fire department have more written agreements because it's very clear what their goal and mission is. But when you have first responders that are the police, whether it's a shooter, whether it's a kidnapping, whether it's, it's a little difficult to describe those situations. But mutual aid is standard practice, and we've been doing it here forever. There's not a written law, I mean, a written agreement amongst folks, but there's an understanding that when an agency within the region needs help, and it can expand all the way down to Mendocino, like we did with Sarabarellis.
And just because you brought it up, city manager, it's going back to 2020, that, those events occurred here in Eureka as a result. And I'm going to assume, so please correct me if I'm wrong, that we had command of that situation, given that it was in our city and that we have the training and the resources.
And some of the recommendations that were made by the OIR group related to this one mutual aid agreement were in place on our side. We had incident action plans in place prior to that, going and responding to that. So yes, it was a different response when we were the ones requesting mutual aid.
Right. And so I think that's what I'm trying to figure out here is, if we have the training, we have the resources, and we're being called to a situation that's at least on a smaller scale, similar to what had occurred in 2020, because I see it as a First Amendment issue, you know, with students expressing themselves, of course, you know, UPD can feel how they feel, I'm just trying to figure it out. How is it that, you know, our officers are called there, but again, our chief has to show up and take command of the situ, or not necessarily take command of the situation, but be the one to offer the directives that would result in four hours later?
And I can't answer for UPD. I think that the report describes as much as it can to see what happened from their perspective. I can't tell you what UPD, if, and I don't even want to, I can't say what UPD did.
And I just want to mention that this is a receive-report situation. And so I think if we want to talk about how to do things differently or better in the future, we need to agendize that specifically. This is not an action item, so.
Right, and I'm not trying to take action.
No, no. I deeply respect what you're, what you're saying here, but that kind of decision-making or direction giving, I think, has a, has a place. I'm not sure it's here.
OK. And then going back to, I believe it was our recommendation from the EPD perspective to give the dispersal order. Am I correct on that? In order to disperse, to declare it an unlawful assembly?
Yeah, and so that's correct, council member. The EPD officers on scene said, if we're going to go in, let's at least try to advise people that this is now determined to be an unlawful assembly. Dispersal orders were made in two locations. It is unclear if the individuals who were meant to hear them actually heard them. So you heard how loud that video was. Unclear if it was heard.
Right, especially if you had folks in the back of the hall. And then they were given an order to disperse, was there an instruction on how to disperse, from where to egress from, straight through from the front, where we had officers with shields, or in the back where it seemed like, or I'm sorry, up on the second floor? Like, how were they to get out once they were given that dispersal order?
Right. So part of crowd management best practice, especially that we saw post-2020, would be to provide all of that information in the dispersal order. would be to provide all of that information in the dispersal order. Again, it was difficult to hear from any of the videos that we reviewed, what the dispersal order was directing individuals to do. But I think it's important here to note that the mission was not to disperse an unlawful assembly at that time. The dispersal order was almost an aside. But in this particular instance, the mission was to go in and arrest individuals who were trespassing and vandalizing. Whether or not that is what we were experiencing in real time in Siemens Hall was something that was outside the span of control of the Eureka Police Department.
And then going back to, I believe it was an earlier comment as you were presenting, at least towards the end. In, in hindsight, looking at what we could and what you could assess, there, you weren't, at least from your perspective, able to warrant an immediate threat and a necessary call for EPD to be present? Or am I misinterpreting that? Because I think what I had written down was no immediate threat to warrant EPD.
Not to warrant EPD, Councilmember Fernandez, no. So what we determined was that to have a law enforcement intervention at the time at which a law enforcement intervention began was potentially unnecessary at that time, given the threat that was occurring inside Seaman Hall. But that does not mean to equate that EPD should not have been there, if that makes sense.
Okay. And then are you able to define a code 30 for me? Or just so I have that clear again?
Yeah.
Okay.
So Councilmember, countywide code 30 is a call for assistance from any agency in the county based on a circumstance that they're facing that's out of control, out of their realm of control, that needs immediate code three response by any available officers, deputies within our county because of the situation's out of control. The times I've seen it used, I've used it once probably 20 years ago with a large fight we had in the middle of Fifth Street when a nightclub let out. I've seen it used when an officer was shot in Arcada at the Plaza. They called for a code 30. It got used when one of our officers was injured in a traffic collision as a part of a pursuit and the suspect was still fleeing and we had a lot of stuff going on. An outside agency actually was on scene when it happened and called for a code 30 because we had an officer down. So those are generally the types of circumstances that they're used for. From an agency standpoint, when it's called, we evaluate what's the response needed? What's that, what is that emergency they're calling us for? How many people can I send and still be able to maintain, to control my own city, my own jurisdiction, and be able to police that? And then are they giving us enough direction on where to go and what we're facing so that those officers or deputies that are responding know what they're gonna encounter when they get there? So if my agency calls it, they're gonna be told where to go. They're gonna be asked what to bring and what that mission is when they get there, or who to meet when they get there, so that there's somebody in control giving them clear directions when they arrive. So that's pretty much the basic outline of what a code 30 is and how it's used in this county.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I think this is a question for our chief. I'm gonna sit down and get comfortable. Can you help me understand how a code 30, which I guess hasn't been used very much, code 30? Is that the phrase?
Yes.
I'm sorry. How that differs from CERT or the Critical Incident Response Team that was established?
Code 30 is to be used at the time where an actual emergency is still unfolding or taking place and the scene isn't stable. CERT is the county's Critical Incident Response Team. They are called, they're a bunch of detectives and evidence technicians and supervisors throughout the county who are called after a critical incident has occurred, an officer involved shooting has occurred. The scene has been stabilized. They come together, they have a briefing, they give out missions on what is the steps that need to be taken to conduct this officer involved shooting investigation. Then they are deployed to a controlled scene and get their direction from there and carry out their mission. So that is a cold response to an emergency versus a code 30. It's something that's still unfolding, it's unstable, it's not secured and needs an immediate emergency response to.
Thank you, sir.
I have thoughts on this. Do I have questions? You know, so many questions have been asked. No, it's, it's okay. It's good. I mean, the, these are the thing, you're right, this is our responsibility to the public. And so I appreciate your questions, you know. And for sure, this is not an inquisition or an accusation, you know, question by accusation. You know, it's really just a desire to learn more. And so I appreciate Yau's patience and knowledge on the subject. It's really clear. You know, I think, you know, mostly I have thoughts after this, so, so I could hold back for a moment. But I think, you know, one thing that's just clear is the professionalism of EPD shines in this report. So I, you know, I do appreciate that. You know, I do have some questions around, philosophical questions, you know, around how we can better articulate our professionalism in relationship to maybe other agencies that do not have the same skills. You know, hopefully are getting some of those skills. But, you know, I think it's a question in terms of, okay, here's the question. You know, are there ever in these mutual aid situations, you know, like agreements made around, you know, who has better training and resources to be the lead in these situations, right? I mean, to me, I think that had we been able to say, you know, like, is that, you know, are there analyses, you know, available for like, okay, these are all of the organizations that are going to be potentially called in a mutual aid scenario? You know, could a police review, you know, kind of assess like, okay, we think that EPD is, actually should be the ones taking the lead in this situation? Or is that just like too controversial?
I, I think it's hard to math that out ahead of time. I do think, and I don't want to speak for the chief, he may want to talk about this, but one of the things that we talked about with him was, you know, his views on, on sort of what he learned as a chief out of this in terms of sending his people and, and what his plans would be in a future similar situation to send, to either go himself or to send a member of his command team who could more comfortably intervene in the situation and maybe set things on a different path. That's maybe the way to put that.
I appreciate. And has that been documented? I know that wasn't in the formal, you know, the recommendations, but is that somewhere in the?
I think it's just the chief's leadership style and, and something, you know, a sort of lesson learned out of this. And again, I shouldn't, he's, he's here and he may want to speak to it. So I, but that was, it was something honestly that, that impressed me about when we first talked about this situation with the chief. His willingness to step into that and, and immediately look at what he could have done differently or better instead of pointing the finger outside, which I, I just think is a, is an admirable thing.
I'd say that it would be very difficult, first of all, being selfish. I wouldn't want to have our chief being committed to another place when we have our own issues to deal with. And I don't think that any other jurisdiction would feel the same. And that, what training you want and what training you need, depending on the jurisdiction, could be very subjective.
Yeah. And, and Mayor Protem, I think that is just an excellent kind of philosophical question, the kind of discussions. No, truly, these are the kinds of questions that, you know, come into our mind as we're reviewing these kinds of things. We saw this a lot when we reviewed the George Floyd protests in the summer of 2020. Agencies that were very large, very well-equipped, responding to smaller cities, smaller jurisdictions. And really, it's, it's having both the respect for the command of that particular jurisdiction where they're responding. But also, as a city manager mentioned, that they themselves, the command staff of their organization, is responsible for maintaining their particular jurisdiction's operations at that time. So it would be difficult to say LAPD in Los Angeles, it's you always. And when you respond to the city of Santa Monica, you're gonna go ahead and take over because clearly you're bigger and you have more resources. That would, that would kind of skew how the mutual aid response works and the responsibility that each command staff has to his or her own jurisdiction.
Thank you. That definitely makes sense. I still think, there's still some things I'm wrestling with, you know. And then I think the one other question is, you know, in these mutual aid scenarios, you know, given that, that situation and, you know, consideration, you know, are there ever like a group of organizations that get together and say, you know, like, we're gonna have someone who's the expert in our community in terms of implementing mutual aid calls, right?
Yeah. And this is part of why, one of the things that we recommended was having this after-action debrief with all of the agencies together. Not so much to say which one is the better one or which one is better equipped, but to come together and say, what are, let's level set and, and set some expectations for this kind of response when we want to help one another out. How do we help raise everybody to the level that we all expect to have when we respond to your particular jurisdiction? And it's really kind of a, an evolving process that, that we're seeing law enforcement take on.
We always take public comment on reports and action items, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. We'll open it up for public comment.
Hi. My name's Larry Giventer. I'm a member of our Community Oversight of Police Practices Board. And I want to just say, oversight works and it's working in the city of Eureka. What we have an example of, and perhaps the best example so far, has been the report of the OIR group regarding this critical incident. The COP personnel were not in session when this occurred, but working through the city manager's office, we, along with you, immediately classified this as a critical incident and called for an OIR review. Twenty-six pages, single-spaced. I hope everybody, including the public, because it's online, will have an opportunity to review this important report. We come to a couple of observations from the COP board. One, you can see the competence and professionalism of our police department and of our police leadership. Two, you can see the difficulty of co-response. Almost every day, our police department works with the county sheriff's office in responding to a variety of incidents, important or mundane. There is no oversight of the sheriff's office. That is a recommendation that is currently before the Board of Supervisors as a result of the Humboldt County Civil Grand Jury. I, if we're asking, what can our city council do? Our city council can help, along with the Board of Supervisors, call for two things. One, oversight, similar to what we have in the city of the county sheriff's office. And two, we do not have in our county a mutual aid agreement among law enforcement. And in my opinion, that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in council chambers who wishes to make comment? Okay. Anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay. With that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah. I just wanted to first say I appreciate I watched the, the COP board meeting and, and also read your report and your list of recommendations. And I just wanted to express my appreciation at this thorough report that I feel like went through everything that anybody could possibly ask or want to have answers to. And so I just really appreciated that. I also want to speak to, you know, during this period of time since the incident, you know, I had talked with a number of individuals here among our own EPD as well as the university's police. And something that was said again and again was the important role that our chief played. And I just wanted to express appreciation for that. And it was difficult to watch that video.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. So from, from the report, it states, "The problems with the overall response we note throughout this report are not related to a training deficiency among the responding EPD officers. In our evaluation, the lapse in training did not have a measurable impact," I'm sorry, referring to the lapse in training of other agencies, "did not have a measurable impact on how EPD responded on April 22nd. They were in fact the only agency that responded with the needed equipment for crowd control." And so our, our agency was called into a situation where we have no formal agreement in place, no unified incident command, and concerns were expressed by both first-level supervisor and our officers on site. And so I, I understand the culture and I understand it's gonna take us time to get there. But much to similar sentiments as my colleague, I'm grateful for the restraint that our officers showed in the situation, given when they were physically attacked or coming to the defense of another. And so I'm, I'm amenable to having a discussion. I don't know if we would do this or if I would ask for it in future agenda items. But following one of the recommendations of an improved, reasonable response to formalize a mutual aid agreement with formal joint training, et cetera.
So as the OIR group had discussed, and I believe the chief alluded to, they are gonna have, they are gonna have a debrief and they are in the process of working on that. That will likely be, what we do as a part of the COP board is we have an investigation log and a claim log that is up-kept and it keeps track of recommendations from investigations and audits that they do. And that is periodically, every quarter, updated. And so at some point in time, we'll have a resolution with this mutual aid agreement as it's a part of that. And if council wants, we can come back and bring that report back to them once it's updated through the process through the COP board.
Would I ask for that now or would I ask for that under future agenda items?
The future agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. I definitely echo my fellow council member's sentiments. And I really appreciate seeing both of the videos side by side. One of the things that struck me is that, watching the video, I could really imagine how it could have escalated more in the situation. And I, I think that actually we're very fortunate that it didn't and that, you know, I appreciate the decision to, you know, step back and reassess. You know, and I have a lot of questions about other agencies and, you know, and just the, the lost opportunity to escalate or to wait or, you know, to allow other processes that happen that didn't create a, you know, a situation where all of a sudden you have people who live in the same community, like in a very dangerously antagonistic, you know, relationship with one another. And, you know, I think that it's our responsibility to prevent those things from happening because, you know, it's really clear in the situation how, you know, people were othered and, you know, all of a sudden like we're not. know, all of a sudden, like, we're not in community together, right? And, and that's ultimately, like, you know, we share that responsibility to, like, build and nourish community. You know, though I can understand why it's, there's some limitations on having the most skilled police presence to be the one in charge, I also think that, you know, and maybe that's why, like, some, I definitely support some sort of mutual aid agreement and especially in terms of, you know, and I understand there's a diplomacy there, but, you know, just in terms of, like, you know, we want the job, that job done as well as possible, you know, to, to the best it can possibly be done. And, you know, if that skill is within our house, you know, or is that our community, you know, especially when it's, right, like, in terms of, like, if it had continued to escalate, the potential risks that were involved, you know, to me, it's like, let's, you know, create as little risk as possible. So I just really appreciate your leadership, Chief Stevens, and the other members of EPD that were there on hand and, you know, and also the decisions you're making around, you know, command being present on site. And yeah, I'm very thankful for this process and the report, so thank you. And with that, we will move on to future agenda items, so well timed. Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, thank you. I guess this would be the appropriate time to make a request to review our mutual aid or to potentially review a mutual aid agreement at a future agenda, or a future meeting. You all be okay with that?
I, I apologize, Councilmember Fernandez, I was lost in my thoughts because I had had a conversation this week briefly with our chief about this. And so, yes, I am in favor of that, keeping in mind that he needs to educate us and on why there are some limitations, but yes.
Do either of you have anything else to bring? Okay. I have a couple of things. Let's see, I would like to bring back a resolution in support of California's 3030 conservation goal. This is a resolution, you know, some of the environmental organizations are supporting it, EPIC amongst them, that are, you know, that is about kind of aligning support around climate change, biodiversity, conservation.
Did you say resolution?
It, it's a, it's a resolution, so yeah, I would be bringing back a resolution.
Thank you.
Just bringing back the resolution itself, it's a, it's a already formed resolution. Yeah, about protecting biodiversity, open space, environment, and human health would be the overall subject matter of it.
It was one we already had? Or you're asking for us to have?
I'm asking to bring it back.
I assume that, what you're suggesting is there a draft exists that we could grab and bring?
Sorry, I shouldn't have my copies.
I follow.
Yes.
Okay. And then I do have one more, and that's to bring back a staff report around kind of the history of single-family zoning and how it has affected the city of Eureka's planning. Thank you. Okay, any, anything else for this?
Could I ask really quickly if we're, when the, no, an update on the thingy, on the, I'm sorry, on having CSET present? Where are we at with that?
That is on this list right here. So yes, it will have it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's see, we do have our city manager report next. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge Chief Robertson, who's here. Chief, could you come on up? I, I think, I believe this, this may be your last meeting here with us, is this true? No, yes. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council. Yes, this is provisionally my last meeting as my role is far chief, just given the rest of the month, and then the interim takes over September 1st.
We want to thank you for your service. It's truly been a delight to get to know you since my time on council. I really appreciate your thoughtful leadership and commitment to change and to the people you support. We'll miss you. You can still come to council meetings and make public comment, just, just throwing it out there.
I may do that to balance the harmony of the universe.
Yeah. You know, and yeah, it's, you know, and personally speaking, your leadership has really impacted me as a council member and as a, you know, leader in the community, so I just appreciate you. Yeah, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for the support of the council and the tremendous support of the staff. I've really developed great relationships and the city's very lucky to have the staff they do, they really are. So thank you.
Thank you. Do either of you want to? Yeah, please.
I just also wanted to express appreciation for you. I remember after I was elected and I came to meet with, meet you for the first time, I was just so impressed with how much you obviously cared and your concern and just your thoughtful approach to everything. And it's been really great getting to know you and I've really appreciated the, how much you've cared about your community and, and this position that you've held. So, and I wish you well in your next adventure.
Thank you.
Want to say thank you for taking me out on the tour of all the, all the stations that we have and the work that you've put into this community and the work that you've done for the, for the fire department here in Eureka. And I'm really loving the Tom Selleck mustache you've grown over the past few months, too. So just thank you for being you, man.
There will be a formal transfer of command in December, and certainly Chief Citro will be stepping in to this role, so you'll get to see a lot of him. But I thought he could have one more evening at home before this experience. But thank you so much. Thank you for acknowledging this tentative event.
Thank you. We look forward to the formal occasion as well, yeah. Okay, and now we will move to the city manager report.
Thank you, mayor and council again, and I also want to thank Chief Robertson. I have learned a lot from him and his, I don't know if this is a term, but his level-headedness when I know that it's very difficult to maintain that. So thank you very much, and I think it's because of him that we've strengthened our relationships a lot with our JPA and our HBF. And thank you very much, Sean, I appreciate it. I just have a really quick report. Get Out and Play Day was this last weekend, extremely successful. It was the 10th anniversary of Get Out and Play Day that we started 10 years ago, obviously. We had over 5,000 participants and we had over 1,500 just up at the Sequoia Park and participating in the events there. So thanks to community services staff for putting that on. It's a great event for the community and look forward to, to next year as well. And I promise I'll, I'll be in better shape and I'll do the slide next year with HBF, hopefully with Citro by my side. So that's all I got.
Thank you. And we will continue on to city council reports, city-related travel reports.
I'll be.
Councilmember, oh, Councilmember Fernandez?
I was going to say I'll be brief in mind since I don't have my notes. Redec met back on July 22nd, I believe it was, the executive committee approved a loan for the Oric Theater. And then we had gotten a presentation and you'll have to forgive me because I don't have my notes in front of me right now, but that's the extent of, of what I've been doing since we last met.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I didn't make my list either, and this is the first time I've done that. I'm embarrassed, I'm sorry. I just, I have had a lot of meetings and interactions with members of the community this past couple of weeks about a variety of things. And, and then also, you know, just mainly just attending online or watching things online to really get myself prepared for our meeting tonight because we had such important other board meetings that were occurring. I'm sure I'm going to forget something, and I also just want to put a little shout out really quick. My youngest son has been attending the summer camps through the city and has had some really sweet experiences, and particularly the staff that was doing things over at Cooper's Gulch has just been, were just incredible to work with and so sweet. And my son is on the spectrum and they were just, even though they're very young themselves, they were just so ready to be supportive and kind, and so it made for this wonderful experience for him. So it's just lovely to see some of the really great things that our city is doing, so.
Thank you. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.